We are going to start this evening's agenda with Mr. Liming or Treasurer and the budget hearing.
Okay, what we're looking at tonight is the tax budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year. It's included in your agenda in the blue sheets, the first two or three sheets there front and back. I want to first explain what a tax budget is. I do this every year, so I apologize if you're bored or heard a few times, but a tax budget is basically a document that is an estimate of what's going to happen in a fiscal year that's still six months away from starting, and it's done so that the Green County Budget Commission, which is the auditor, the treasurer, and prosecuting attorney's office can set the millage to pay off our bond issue, which is, you know, when we built the new middle school and renovated and added on to the other buildings in 2004, '05, '06, something like that, the, basically, the loan similar to a mortgage that we took, the county auditor is required, and the budget commission, to set the millage that will yield the amount of money we need to pay principal and interest. That's one purpose of it. The second one is that the, to help the treasurer know what the estimate is from the county auditor for the property valuation for the upcoming year, which will affect our receipts and help me for budgeting purposes. So this isn't anything that's set in stone, it's all estimates, so if anything, I want to go through it and ask for questions if you have any, but it's not anything to get too excited about, it's just an estimate. Except for this first part, because this is history. First page, I think, is the most interesting one. It shows off to the right where it says "Tax Year 2023, Estimated Value $786 Million" figure is our estimated property valuation for the 2023-24 fiscal year. And about three years ago, we were either at $600 million or less than that maybe. So that's how much we've increased in the valuation of the homes and businesses in our school district. That affects, that first line, inside millage. This is, I always say, inside millage is a very difficult concept to realize, so if we want to get into weeds on that, it's probably going to have to have another session, but our different districts have an inside millage set that was set years and years and years ago. Ours is 4.5 mils, and that yields, that is the one area that we do recognize inflationary revenue growth from year to year. So it's estimating, we're going to bring in $3,271,000 on our inside millage. After that, all these are levies that we passed over the years, when we passed them, or maybe replaced them if we did, and then how much they're bringing in. And remember, for instance, that first old one there, four mils, is only bringing in $509,000 because it's set at what the property valuation was in 1973, was a little over $100 million, now $786 million. So the bottom line there, total general fund, 59.3 mils are collected to bring in $23 million, estimated $23,900,000. For our emergency levy that we passed, it's to yield $3.22 million. That's the one levy that's different, like we talked about, it brings in a flat amount each year. That's another one that the auditor adjusts the millage on. The auditor gets the estimated property valuation, and what millage multiplied by that is going to give us the $3.22 million. That's where they got the 4.66 mils beside the emergency down there, and it will yield in the estimated $3.22 million. Bond issue, show how much that gets there, and then the permanent improvement is a two-mil levy that was passed, actually passed somewhere around 2000, and in 2008 it was replaced to the values at that time, but it brings in about just under $900,000 a year. Any questions on that page?
So when the 2003 bond is over, or that collection period is over, will that fall off?
Yes, yes, it will. And what really happens, so it was, I think, a 26-year issue, so two, three plus 26, 2029 would be about, I could look to get the exact, well, 2030, I have it out here, levy goes through 2030. So in seven years or something like that, that will drop off. Between now and then, at 4.2 mils, will probably reduce a little bit each year, because, you know, the principal will be less, it's like a loan, the more you get paid off, the less that needs to be collected to make the payment that year. So that will reduce.
So people's taxes will go down in that year?
Yes, yes. We also, by the way, I don't think I have any information on this form for these two debts, but we have a lease purchase that we put in place about 15 years ago that will be expiring in three years, and we have the 10-year Houseville 264 Energy Project that we passed, it only has two years left on it, so those two will also be dropping off, and I think those are both paid out of, one out of general fund and one out of PI, so they won't affect the millage, but that will be more money that we will have available in our budget at that time. Are any other questions? We'll go on to page two. Oh, I forgot to mention, in addition to this little form here that we have, I have to include my five-year forecast with the tax budget that I filed with the county auditor's office. I didn't include that here again tonight because we passed it already, and I thought it would be redundant, but I include that, and I have to include a copy of the resolution we made to vote to pass this, the vote, and then tomorrow morning, hopefully, we'll pass this tonight, and tomorrow morning I can file this and meet the deadline of the 15th. So the bond issue, I think I said before it's like a mortgage, because a bond issue is only passed when you're going to build a building, so, well, I guess there are some specific ones that are rare, that are different, but usually it's for construction. So you pass a bond issue, that money can only be spent on paying off the debt of that building, and a lot of items are involved in that, you have to have a bond underwriter involved, you have to get a rating from Moody's or one of those organizations that affects how much, what interest rate you're going to get. Moody's is going to tell you how risky your district seems to be with our balances, they even look at all demographics, how many years have the superintendent, treasurer been here, whole bunch of things they look into, a lot of them you don't even understand why they need to know that, but they take a look at everything and then say, "This district looks really solid financially and demographically in every other way, we're going to give you a rating that will require a lower interest rate for you to pay," so it will help there. So bond issue is pretty straightforward, we only receive money from property taxes, and the rollback on those, that's the portion of them that's paid by the state, that senior citizens do not have to pay. Those are the two ways we receive money, the bond issue, bond fund, and then we spend on principal interest and fees for the auditor or treasurer department to collect the legal taxes. Small levy there, I guess that's small. And then I show the balances at the bottom, so that the budget commission would look at this and say, "Okay, the treasurer predicts that the income balance is going to be positive all the way out here, so we don't have to worry about increasing that millage." You know, if for some reason there's a, it's going to be, I'm predicting the year is going to be in the red, well, then they have to increase that, taxes would go up, that rarely happens. And this is a good thing, bond issue, I mean, from my standpoint, once it's passed, you don't have to worry about the finances of it anymore, really, because the county auditor, like I said, is required to charge the millage to pay off the principal interest, so theoretically it should never be in the red, or you never have to add to it. And then on the last page is the PI. This is a two-mil levy that was passed, like I said, about somewhere around 2000, and then in 2008 it was replaced, so they brought the two mils against that, the vote passed, so they brought the two mils against the property valuation at that time, so it is a tax increase when you replace a levy, rather than renew a levy, renew a levy is no taxes. With the PI, we buy things like our school buses, our major repairs, if all of a sudden we can roof the high school, that's going to come out of PI unless there's no money in PI. And it's required to, the only real requirement from the auditor's office is that you're purchasing things that are going to last longer than one year and are considered somewhat to be items of equipment, but they will let you buy hard copy textbooks, things like that with PI. When Betsy updates the curriculum, board passes to do that for a subject that's big expenditure, that could come out of PI, and we can pay debt out of PI, too, if it's for a building, kind of debt. So the PI, I was, I want to talk to Dr. Kozad about this, PI and general fund kind of go hand in hand. If we have a big expenditure we need to make, there's not enough money in PI, it's a PI type of expenditure, you know, if we've got to buy a bunch of buses for some reason and we don't have the money, we have to spend the balance of that out of the general fund. So a lot of times it doesn't really matter which fund you're using, because, you know, we try to use up our PI for PI items, but what does come out of here comes out of the general fund, so. And that's really all I have, unless we have any questions on any of this, it's a small form and the process is much easier than it used to be years ago, they really streamlined this one, to just, they only now ask for what they need instead of a really big detailed report that they used to execute.
Any questions? Is this something we vote on later during the official meeting? Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin. And I think at this point we pause for a few minutes until 7 o'clock, and we'll begin our...
Kevin, you want to paragraph or direct with your attention?
Oh, yes, I can do that. We are required by the auditor's office also, and we are being audited right now, to have a records retention committee, and I was even told by an auditor that one way to do it is just have the board president, super penitent, and treasurer be the committee. And we just meet, we have to meet once a year and put it in the minutes that we have no old financial records to be destroyed, as we're recommending tonight, or if we do have some that need to be destroyed, then we have to take the time to pull those out, detail what they are, send that to the Ohio Historical Society and the state auditor's office, get approval from both of them to go ahead and destroy, if the historical society doesn't see anything on there that they would like us to keep for historical purposes. And I've heard that that takes like six weeks, and then we can destroy them if we get the approval from them. And then I would say here, the records retention committee met and determined that these records need to be destroyed or listed. We have a records retention policy that says, you know, this kind of item, receipt, has to be kept this many years for auditing purposes, and it has been approved by the auditor's office, so we go by that when we're destroying records. And so tonight, I'm just going to put, we don't need to vote on this, I'm just going to put in the minutes the record retention committee met and determined that there are no records this year to destroy at this time. And I wanted to explain that so that we know what we're seeing there.
Questions? All right, good evening, everyone. This meeting is a meeting of the Bellbrook Sugar Creek Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered to be a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda item. This is our regular January and reorganizational meeting, January 12th, and we'll call this meeting to order, and Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter's absent, Mrs. Dorn.
Here.
Mr. Kenzie.
Present.
Mr. Price is absent, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
We were aware that Mr. Price was not going to be here, he's been called out of town on business. Unfortunately, we planned for Mr. Carpenter to be here, he has had a family emergency. I won't share those details, but I think it's safe to say he and his family are in all of our prayers, and if you're so inclined, I'm sure his family would appreciate your prayers as well. And with that, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as I mentioned, this was kind of a last-minute audible, so we might be a little clumsy here for a minute, so y'all bear with us. We have a hand carry to the agenda item, or to the agenda, I should say, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Kozad.
So recommend current vice president Audrey Dorn to serve as president pro temp at the annual organizational meeting on January 12th, 2023, until duly reappointed by associate board members or replaced by duly elected successors.
Okay, I'll make that motion. So...
Second.
So to explain what's happening earlier, actually, this meeting last year, we elected Mr. Carpenter president pro temp at this meeting, as there is currently no president of the board, someone has to run the meeting until we elect a president tonight, since the president pro temp is not here, we have to elect a new one, so that we can get to the point of the meeting where we elect a president. That's what we're doing. Anyone have questions or comments? All right, Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. And with that, first item on the agenda is the nomination, no election, a new president. So I'm opening nominations for the position of school board president. I'd like to make a nomination. I will go ahead and nominate, I'd like to nominate Mr. Kenzie, and while I do that, I'd like to share something I shared last year. The position of president is not, as some might suspect, a position of honor or power, it is a position of increased burden and increased servitude. On a school board, there's very few, if any, additional powers bestowed upon the president, but the president does have to do a lot of extra work, and as such, I think it's appropriate for it to not be burdensome on the same individual over and over and over again. So as co-equal board members, I think it's, I personally feel like it's a good idea for that to shift seats, not every year, but every so often, to move that burden and that responsibility around. So I'd like to nominate Mr. Kenzie. Any further nominations? Okay, hearing none. Further discussion at this point? Okay, Mr. Liming, please call the roll. As a reminder, when we vote on election of officers, we vote by name, not by yes/no.
Right, and do we vote to close nominations?
Oh, sorry. Again, clumsy, definitely not doing this, sorry, we need to vote to close nominations. Do I hear that motion? So, and I'll second that myself. Would you call the roll to close nominations?
Yes. Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Now, is there any further discussion? I suspect not. Would you call the roll for the vote of the actual nomination of president?
Okay, this is the one where you answer Kenzie or no on this roll call. Okay, Mr. Kenzie?
Awkwardly, Kenzie.
Mrs. Anderson?
Kenzie.
And Mrs. Dorn.
Kenzie. That motion passes. Congratulations. Your gamble, sir. This is the other awkward part, we actually have to switch sheets right now.
No promises that that's going to be the most awkward thing, but we have more to count, I'm sure. Okay, so I would like to open nominations for vice presidents. Are there any nominations from the floor? I would like to nominate Mrs. Dorn. You've proven yourself, you have served well in this role, you've run meetings when emergencies happen, thank you for that, that was my rationale. Any further nominations for the office of vice president? Not hearing any. The chair would like to make a motion to close nominations for the office of vice president. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on closing nominations for vice president? If not, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes. No, Dorn. She looked at me like, "What are you doing?" I was like, "Wait, Dorn?"
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
And Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Okay. Now, now we're doing that. Okay, I'll call the roll, and the answer would be Dorn or no. Mrs. Dorn?
Dorn.
Mr. Kenzie?
Dorn.
Mrs. Anderson?
Dorn.
Motion passes. Congratulations, thank you for serving yet again, we appreciate it. Okay, next, moving right into, can never speak for my fellow board members, but probably I think it's safe to say, one of the favorite things that we do in any meeting is our student recognition, we have several athletes in attendance tonight.
These have to be signed by the president, we didn't know who the president was before
Thank you. You know, my, all the few of these fine student athletes up in the front, Sam Vine, 2022 OHSAA varsity football, offensive line, first team All-State, congratulations. We got pictures? Sorry, man.
You can all be here.
Okay, very good. Sam Barhorst, 2022 OHSAA varsity football linebacker, second team All-State. Carson Lebenski, 2022 OHSAA varsity football punter, second team All-State. Eldon Corber, 2022 OHSAA varsity football defensive back, honorable mention, All-State. CJ Skowee, 2022 OHSAA golf state qualifier and All-State honorable mention. Mikiya Ford, 2022 OHSAA cross-country state qualifier, and you've seen us a few times before, I think, so welcome back. Riley Farren, 2022 OHSAA boys soccer, second team All-State. How about a round of applause for everybody?
They're taking me, like...
I think the board members almost have to be in front, even though that's awkward. They're all bigger.
They're all bigger.
That is awkward, but we're going to have to go. All right, one, two, three. Great. Cut. Come on in there.
Great job, everyone, thanks very much.
It's really enjoyable to be all...
Yeah, if anybody at this time would like to vacate the meeting, we absolutely understand and welcome you to do so, no problem at all.
January is school board recognition month, and we have it on the agenda, but since we have two board members that are not here today, we actually have another meeting in January, on the 28th of January, so we're going to move that item to January 28th so that we can share appreciation with all five of the board members, so planning on being here at that board meeting, so we'll present those certificates at that time. Moving on to the reorganizational meeting, recommend approval of a district-wide organizational
Do we have a motion to approve the organizational chart? It's included in our packet?
Some of.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded to adopt the organizational chart. Any discussion at this time, Dr. Kozad?
Yeah, this has, this is probably the first time in maybe five, six, seven years that this organizational chart has been revised, so again, we've had some additions and some move around, so this is an update as to our existing structure. So we plan on doing this every January, it's going to be part of our reorganizational meeting, we're going to do this every January. I do want to note, Mr. Liming, that there are quite a few things underneath me, and there's one underneath you, but that's okay, we'll move on to that.
Is it questions for Dr. Kozad or further discussion?
My only question is the athletic director position, that always, only in high school, or is that one currently only in high school?
The athletic director is only high school right now, or middle school principals are the middle school athletic, right, A.D.s, yeah.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Liming, please call the roll on the question of adopting the organizational chart.
Okay, Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Yes.
Next up, the chair. Is that correct?
Service six?
Yeah.
Next item is recommendation for a service fund to be established in the amount of $4,000 for fiscal year 2023 for the purpose of board member professional meeting expenses as permitted by Ohio Revised Code 3315.15. There just happens to be a note here that the fiscal year 2022 rate set last year was the same, $4,000. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Dorn. It has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Liming, please call the roll on adopting the service fund.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Item number seven, recommending appointment of the superintendent of schools as the representative for federal programs and recommend authorizing superintendent to file applications for federal programs and educational grants and to appoint representatives to complete all forms and evaluations required by the programs and/or grants. Is there a motion to accept?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn and Mrs. Anderson? Any discussion? Okay, not hearing any. Mr. Liming, please call the roll on adopting the appointment of the superintendent of schools for these purposes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Number eight, recommend the following authorizations be granted to the superintendent, treasurer, and president of the Belbrook Sugar Creek Board of Education to carry out their duties involving personnel and finances. There's quite a few of them here. Eight A, treasurer is authorized to secure advances from the Green County Auditor when funds are available and payable to the school district. I'm sorry, do we do these one at a time or read all of the?
Read all of them.
Okay, very good. And then one all. Right. Eight B, treasurer is authorized to invest interim funds at the most productive interest rate when interim funds are available. Eight C, the treasurer is authorized to sign all checks and to pay all bills within the limits of the appropriations resolution as invoices are received and when merchandise has been received in good condition. Eight D, superintendent is authorized to employ such temporary personnel as needed for emergency situations. Such appointees are to be presented for board approval at the next regular meeting. Eight E, the superintendent is authorized to accept employee resignations between meetings when the board is not in session. Resignations are to be presented for board approval at the next regular meeting retroactive to the date of the superintendent's designee acceptance. Eight F, treasurer is authorized to borrow money if needed in accordance with the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code. Eight G, superintendent is authorized to approve attendance at in-state professional meetings for all licensed and support staff personnel. Eight H, superintendent and treasurer are authorized to attend those business and professional meetings as deemed necessary with expenses paid according to school board appropriations to properly conduct the business of the district and promote education. Eight I, superintendent, treasurer, and board president are authorized to sign legal papers as representatives of the board. Eight J, superintendent is authorized to serve as the purchasing agent for the school district. Eight K, treasurer is authorized to make temporary advances from one fund to other funds as allowed by Ohio Revised Code. Eight L, treasurer is authorized to arrange for and sign depository contracts with local banks. Eight M, treasurer is authorized to reestablish the treasurer's petty cash fund for 2023 at $250 and to establish individual petty cash funds as needed for efficient operation. Eight N, treasurer is authorized to credit all earned interest to the general fund with exception of trust funds and the lunchroom fund. Eight O, treasurer is authorized to act as district-wide public records designee. Do I have a motion to adopt all of that?
Some of them.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion or questions about any of these individual items?
I had a question on I. Does it require all three of those signatures to sign those legal papers or can they individually sign?
It would be individually. Every once in a while, we run into one that requires all three. But usually it's one or the other or both of us. And only if it's not board president that some requires it.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions, comments? If not, Mr. Liming, please call the roll on the question of adopting everything under agenda item eight.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Recommend the incumbent president serve as president pro temp at the annual organizational meeting in January 2024 until duly reappointed by associate board members or replaced by duly elected successor at the annual reorganizational meeting.
Some of them.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? No, Mr. Liming, please call the roll on giving these for pro temp.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
And Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Number 10, recommend approval for the use of facsimile signature of the treasurer on checks.
Some of them.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion or questions?
I remember those days.
Not hearing any anymore. Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Okay, Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, recommendation for adoption of a resolution to waive the reading of the records and proceedings of previous meetings in accordance with section 3313.26 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Is there any discussion or questions? Say, this has been in practice for quite a long time as far as I'm concerned.
Right, and this saves us a lot of money. It's per purchasing, quantity purchasing.
We're on the next one. We're on, we don't want to read less.
We're reading of the records.
Right, it's in practice where we would have to verbally read the notes each morning.
Okay, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Recommend authorization for districts' continuation of membership in the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Cooperative and the Ohio Purchasing Cooperative Program and hereby approve the payment for all applicable membership fees.
Some of them.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Next is item number 13 on our agenda. During this meeting, every year, we typically have discussion amongst ourselves and usually come to consensus about who would be serving on various committees. I would like to open discussion and just throw out there that perhaps we, because we are legally allowed to do so. There were things that we legally had to do tonight, well, before January 15th. But this is something that I feel like would, we can probably move as an agenda item to the next meeting just so everybody can participate. That would be my recommendation, but does anybody have any problem with that?
I got that discussion with all five of us present.
So we can move that to the next meeting?
We need to table it?
Well, we don't need to table anything because nothing has been moved and seconded yet. So I believe we can just take this agenda item and move it to the next meeting. Because we haven't started any work on it.
We will do that.
Okay, thank you. Up next then is the treasurer's report.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of December 19, 2022 board meeting?
Some of them.
Second.
Is the roll call?
Any discussion or, sorry, yeah. That's usually how we jump in, but any discussion on the last minutes or in our packet? Okay, yes, please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of December?
Some of them.
Second.
We have very much to discuss. The percentages are really looking good. We are receiving a little more than we expected to at this time of the year and spending a little less than we expected to, so. Having good years at work.
Any questions for the treasurer's report? Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the 2324 tax budget as reviewed during the budget hearing held prior to the organizational meeting for Ohio Revised Code 5705.28?
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion or questions on the tax budget? Now, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve in advance, which is the same as a loan, because it will be repaid, from the general fund to the following funds? O3 permanent improvement, $240,110.76. Fund 5079023, which is the Art Esser Grant, And the federal Title II A grant, 5909123, for $2,245.3. And like I said quite often, it's just federal grants or in the case of permanent improvement, we're waiting our tax cell in two, three months to replenish that fund, but yet we spent money. I think a good part of that was on the, on security and things like that. So we need to loan money till we can get that other.
Some of them.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any further questions? No, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve a resolution in support of the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund, which is, you think I should read that whole thing there?
Yes, please.
Okay. Whereas the Belbrook Sugar Creek Board of Education wishes to support the efforts of other boards of education to obtain favorable judicial decisions. And whereas the Ohio School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund has been established for this purpose, therefore, the board hereby resolves to participate in the OSBA LAF Legal Assistance Fund for calendar year 2023 and authorizes the treasurer to pay the legal assistance fund $250.
Some of them.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. This is something we've been a member of for a long time, my understanding.
Right.
Any other comments, questions?
Dr. Kozak, could you talk a little bit about what this covers, what our benefits are?
I think, yeah. Yes.
Check out the cap.
We're sharing in, like, High School Board Association supports schools and needs some legal assistance, but they won't be ghetto to a certain extent and I won't do some very difficult things for us. But the costs of that continue to increase and they, you know, $250 is a very small amount, but it helps fund, when all districts in the state pay that, it helps fund the legal defense for districts that are injured from OSBA.
So should we find ourselves a little bit of that? We need access to that.
Yes, right.
They also do some training on that. School board members.
Additional questions? Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item number 15 on the agenda, which is correspondence.
Actually, we have a book. Han Carey, 14F.
Thank you. We do.
Need a resolution or need a motion to approve adding a new student activity fund, the other TP at Belbrook High School as recommended by Mr. Han and the advisor.
Some of them.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Dorn? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
And this is not something where we're funding an advisor, it's just a volunteer. They have, this way, they have a separate account to better track their finances for accounting purposes.
It's a fantastic for the high schools.
Mr. Liming, please call the roll on 14F.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Now we are on to correspondence. If anybody has anything that they received that they would like to share for the good of the board and community? Yeah, it's been quiet.
We did have a parent that was singing the praises of the reading intervention people that really helped their child. So we really appreciated receiving that good news.
Okay, we can move on to reports to the board. We'd like to welcome the middle school assistant principal, this is Jenna Hill. Thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely, thank you for having me. So I will keep this short and sweet. We just wanted to go over our course offerings. So with the middle school, I just kind of organized it as to show you, you know, what a sixth grader would experience here, a seventh grader and an eighth grader. But before we started, I just wanted to say it's been a great year at Belbrook Middle School. It feels like we are really kind of back into the swing of things. Some highlights of our year, we had our first all-school pep rally since 2020. We've been having to do them by grade. And so it was really fun to have all three grades in the gym, our cheerleaders and being able to highlight all our fall sports. We'll get to do that again here in the winter and then the spring. Of course, we've been able to bring back dances, which is always a lot of fun, and spirit weeks and all of those really great things. I did want to just say a special thank you to our union as well as the board for the MOU to be able to pay our Hope Squad advisors. Couple years ago, when we looked into that, teachers volunteered their time. I think none of us really knew the amount of time and training that goes into that because it is such important work. So I am thrilled that while they were never going to stop doing the work, they're not going to get paid for it. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. In February, the high school school counselors will be coming down and meeting with our eighth graders. So they will begin the scheduling process for high school and our school counselors here, of course, supports that. And then one other thing to highlight, which will be coming out, our specific dates on both of the eighth grade scheduling and then our incoming sixth graders, our current fifth graders at BCI. Last year, we started for the first time that incoming sixth grade parent meeting. And a lot of feedback was that was so helpful instead of having to wait all the way, you know, until school started and orientation. So we will be putting that out in our middle school monthly next week and coordinating with Mr. Phelps to communicate to fifth grade families. But essentially to kind of take them through what I'm going to take you through tonight, what sixth grade looks like. So more information on that to come. All right, so with that, looking at sixth grade, we do not have any changes in sixth grade this year. Every sixth grader takes our four cores, ELA, science, social studies, and math. Depending on where they were in fifth grade Depending on where they were in fifth grade and completely database decisions here, they would potentially be taking Math 6, Math 7, or Math 7, 8. They take our, for periods 5 and 6, we have our encores, which means every sixth grader takes these in a trimester rotation, so these are trimester classes. So they take Art 6, Digital Literacy 6, and Health 6. And then our elective, so this is where they get that kind of first taste of choice. In sixth grade, we mirror these with PE. We have found it's really, really important and best practice to have a lot of PE and especially for sixth graders, to be able to offer them PE, not daily, but at least weekly, they do get it. So they will be choosing band, they will be choosing choir, or they will be choosing general music, and then that is rotated with PE. So one week, there are three days PE, two days music, and then it switches the next week. One thing I did want to highlight, and you'll see this on all of the grade levels, we have a class called Life Skills. We've taught it in the past, and it's sort of an as-needed class, and we have, this year kind of really decided we wanted to highlight it because we've seen a need for it. So I just wanted to explain what it is. Again, it's not a new class, but we are revamping a little bit. So just like the name, it is a life skills class. It will be taught by one of our intervention specialists, and then they will also be assisted by our two school counselors. And it's going to be based on teacher recommendation and parent engagement as well, of course, but focusing on just very simple things like time management, managing the Chromebook, managing Google Classroom, to just building relationships, relationship-building skills, social awareness, decision-making, and then just resiliency, grit, those things. So if it is recommended that maybe a student would benefit from that, that would be just a trimester, and so we would have a trimester for sixth graders, the next one would be seventh, eighth, whatever kind of rotation we come up with that works best. So it's been a class we've offered in the past, we haven't the last two years, but it's one that we're kind of excited to bring back and revamp as we're seeing just the need, they get a needs-based class. Okay? And then on to seventh grade, looks very similar again, ELA, Science, Social Studies, and then either Math 7, Math 7, 8, or Algebra 1. In seventh grade, the encore that we did, this is really our only change for the year. We originally had Flight as the encore. That is one of our classes that we are very fortunate to partner with Green County Career Center. We, in discussing it with our teachers, our STEM teachers from seven all the way to our high school STEM teachers, and really kind of getting feedback from the experts, our advisors through Green County, through parent feedback, student feedback, we just really felt that automation and robotics was more of a general STEM class versus Flight was a little bit more specific. And so looking at transferable skills to our eighth grade STEM and then our high school STEM classes, we felt that there were maybe some more skills that were really, we wanted to expose all seventh graders to. And so Flight is still an elective, if that is a special interest for students, you know, Mr. Han and I talked about it as well, there is Flight-specific STEM classes in high school too. So, you know, that was something that we just really discussed, and I know it's always hard with a class in the elective rotation because you're having to choose band, choir, or that rotation. So we just really felt that automation and robotics kind of fit more of that model for all kids to really get that keen exposure to some of those very standard, basic STEM skills. So in the encore, again, those are trimester rotations, so automation, robotics, PE, and Health 7. And then their electives, they would choose band or choir or our elective rotation, which is Flight, Art 7, and then one of the classes we often highlight is our Eagle Outreach Class, which is our, basically, class that we encourage students to give back to the community. So they do things from helping at Steven Bell to helping some local daycares to For Pos for Ability, anything and everything, it's very student-driven, so they are given kind of an initial intro to volunteering. They go through some skills-based training about interacting with adults and how do you send an email and things like that. So I love it because Mr. Eckley and I kind of get to practice too, and they email us asking, you know, and so we kind of refine some of those really important skills. So, and then the starred classes, of course, are what we are very fortunate to partner with Green County Career Center. All right? And then for eighth grade, again, very similar, similar look, ELA, Science, Social Studies, and Math, so Math 8, Scholarship, Algebra 1, Scholarship, Geometry. And then in the encore for eighth graders, it is Home Economics, PE, and Design and Modeling. And again, just to kind of go back, really, it's a nice transition from that automation and robotics to Design and Modeling, some of those foundational skills. So now all seventh graders will have that, which will be very beneficial for all eighth graders going into Design and Modeling. Their elective, again, band or choir or our rotation there, our Medical Detectives, Food and Fitness, and then Digital Literacy 8. Medical Detectives is a very, very neat class, and it feeds into our Biomed program at the high school as well. Just last week, I got to be a patient, and the students had to come interview me, ask me my symptoms, and then they were literally detectives and trying to figure out kind of what I had going on. And again, those are in partnership with our Green County Career Center as well as Home Act and then Food and Fitness, and I just want to highlight their, just some really great work that Elisa Tackett has been doing. She has really kind of revamped those classes. So not only are they learning kind of the basic cooking and sewing and things like that, but she's really taken a career focus now and trying to expose students to as many career opportunities as they can, and just really looking at important skills like budgeting and how much things cost, student loans and things like that. So she has really revamped that program, and we're very, very proud of those opportunities that we are giving our students. So with that, I told you I would keep it short and sweet. Do you have any questions, concerns, anything that I can answer for you?
Thank you. A lot of great offerings.
Yes, yes.
Very well-rounded.
Yes.
Nice offering, so appreciate that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Up next, our high school principal, Mr. Han.
Thank you very much for staying here, we appreciate you. I'm a little froggy here, I'm fighting off sinus infection. So I, there are a lot of slides in this packet, but there are not a lot of changes, and there won't be a lot of words today, so I'm going to move relatively quickly through this. Again, like the middle school, we had a great year last year, and we're having a great year this year. Our students excelled academically, athletically, artistically, as they do every year, and we're very proud of them and fortunate to have such great kids and great teachers, and that's also what we offer so many, you know, great classes and challenging classes. Last year, we were the best in Green County on the state report cards, and we, every so often, we look at our similar districts and see how we rank there, and Bellebrook scored in the top tier of that as well. Number one in U.S. history, so we're very proud of those achievements. Once again, we are recognized by U.S. News as one of the best high schools in America. Our passing percentage of the AP test was the highest we've ever had, since we've been keeping records, and again, our PLTW programs were recognized by PLTW. Not sure if that's going to work going forward as it's kind of been transferred to the Career Center, but we'll see how that plays out. But again, our kids are doing great things. If you flip to one, two, three, page four, five, if you look at art, art is, we have two relatively new teachers there to the district, Mrs. Newsom and Mrs. Parsons, and they are making some changes, some good changes, kind of making the department theirs. We've changed one class, basically name only, Arts and Crafts is now called Cultural Arts, focusing on the arts and crafts of different world cultures, including from Mexico, Native American cultures, Japanese, Chinese, Aboriginal, things like that. Same class, different name. We are adding a new class there called Career Art, which basically is going to expose students to visual art, jobs, careers, anything from food truck ownership and design, cake decoration, tattoo artist, comic book, whatever, artist, graffiti artist, graphic designer, special effects, you name it, it's going to be introduced to them in an elective, so it's a pretty cool opportunity. In math, Scholarship Precalculus will now be AP Precalculus, that's a new offering that APs put forward, and we've always taught it, the class itself isn't changing, it's just, we've always taught it at that level, and some of our top math students, but now, since we have an AP class available, we're switching to that. So it'll be one more, I believe it'll be the 15th AP class we'll offer next year, so that's, that's a nice addition. AP Calculus BC is back, that is kind of one of the top classes to get into, and depending on the year and depending on the cohort of kids, sometimes we can run it, sometimes we can't. I think we'll have the numbers next year to make that happen again. And also, problem-solving class is kind of going away, and its niche is kind of being filled by quantitative reasoning, which was a new class last year, and is also an Algebra II equivalent through the state. Not many changes. We're doing a lot of great things, the kids are doing great, teachers are doing great. If you look at PLTW, again, that was moved to the Career Center last year, or this year for engineering. They did not offer civil engineering and architecture due to numbers and to just periods. We're going to try to run that next year and offer that, and depending on student interest and how that works, we'll try to offer that as well. But again, in that situation, we have digital electronics, we have civil engineering architecture, we have aerospace engineering, and many other classes there too. So that's a partnership with the Career Center. Also, we partner with them for the biomedical program and our Family and Consumer Science Program, so we have a strong relationship there. Again, I think you guys are all pretty familiar with our courses of study. It's relatively robust, I would say, we have a little bit of everything, we're able to offer a lot of things to students in order to challenge themselves, to try as many things as possible, or to focus in on an area too. And we're very fortunate to be able to do that in a small, relatively small district. We offer a lot, we pack a lot of punch for us being the size that we are, and we're very happy and very proud of that. With that, any questions?
Could I hear you say you're going to teach our students how to do PD?
Well, they already know how to do it.
Properly harnessing their artistic abilities.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you both for being here, I'm sure at the end of another long day serving our students, which you do so well. Thank you for taking the time and giving your reports, we really appreciate it. Okay, next, agenda item number 17 is our open communication period. Anybody to sign up? Nobody tonight? So we will move on to our new business. So we are going to have a consent agenda for items 18A, 18B, and 18C. All those are outlined in your packet. Can I get a motion to adopt 18A, 18B, and 18C as your consent agenda? And I'm sorry, pause real quick, I see we also have a hand carry as well, so I did see this before. So 18A looks like is the only addition on the hand carry.
Correct.
Thank you. So can I get a motion to adopt 18A, which includes the hand carry, 18B, and 18C?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Anderson, it has been moved and properly seconded to adopt all of 18A, BC. Any discussion? I'm not hearing any. Mr. Lyman, please call the roll to adopt our consent agenda for this evening.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Just point out Danielle Wasty is our new Transportation Secretary, so welcome. You've already been a part of the district for many years as a bus driver, and shifting over to Transportation Secretary, so she already knows a ton of information about Transportation Department, but is learning a lot more as she's shifting into the, into that office along with Lori Smith, so welcome, and she's already on the job, and so we appreciate that, and already you're doing a fantastic job. Thanks. Courses of study, as you guys just heard, or courses of study for 2023, recommend approved for the 2023-24 courses of study for Bellebrook High School and Bellebrook Middle School.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to adopt the courses of study for 2023-2024. Is there any discussion? I will only mention, Ohio Revised Code calls out one of the things that a school board is responsible for is approving curriculum, that's actually written in the law, this is not curriculum, this is just courses of study that have been presented. Just want to make that clarification. Mr. Lyman, please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Out-of-state travel, recommend approved for the following out-of-state travel, high school softball to Murfreesboro, Tennessee, it's easy for me to say, March 26th to 28th, 2023, participate in spring break tournament play, no cost to the district, and Bridget Pritchard, Director of Special Ed Education, to Louisville, Kentucky, March 1st to the 4th, 2023, to attend conference for exception children, annual conference, all fees paid by title, for federal Title II A funds.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson, and then Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. Dorn, and then Mrs. Anderson. Any discussion? Mr. Lyman, please call the roll on the question of out-of-state travel.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
All right, recommend acceptance of the following donation with gratitude, Bellebrook Lions Club, $3,000 cash donation toward repairs, upgrade stadium, high jump pit.
First.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, and then Mrs. Anderson. Any discussion?
That's awesome, once again, one of these two meetings in a row, thank you.
Lions Club constantly does a lot for our students and our student athletes, so mega thanks to them. Mr. Lyman, please call the roll on accepting their generous donation.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Second or third half, thank you very much, Lions Club. Always want to help out, and just always there for me, so we do appreciate that.
We move into agenda item G, items of information discussion.
Let me do the first one.
That'd be great. Okay, thanks.
Items of information discussion, so first semester bullying report. Again, these are instances that were reported, not necessarily that they happened or, you know, they were obviously investigated, looked into, Steven Bell at 2, BCI 6, Middle School 7, High School 1, so this is from the first semester, we have to report this for the first and second semester, and all this information is on our website. That's just information to walk that wire, and I'll let you do that.
Right, and our next one is to have any discussion, any ideas that people might have that you would like included formally as an agenda item for our next meeting, which is on January 28th. I know we've previously battered around a few things, I think we've already captured, but anything else you would like to?
We've already captured, but.
I know we talked about perhaps a discussion about specifically Board of Education goals for the coming year? That would be good.
Board policy, strategic plan, meeting with SEA, Mr. Carrera will be here, against Mrs. White, SLAS president is not able to be here, but I've already talked to Mr. Carrera. Trying to think if there was something else, I had all those written down. I don't think those were the main ones of agenda items.
These are all pretty broad enough.
Let's say board policy.
You did.
Yeah, board policy.
And now we have to add things that we, we.
Question from the committee discussion.
Yeah, the committees.
Committee, because we want to.
Yes.
Correct. And being that that's more of a regular, regular meeting item versus the rest, kind of, that sort of a meeting takes on more of a workshop and formal feel. Do we intend to do those upfront, do the, for peoples?
Yeah, we'll do that.
We'll do all the formal upfront, and then we'll move into more of a workshop environment?
That's what I would envision, I'd see if there's other. OSBA conference feedback. And those were the other things we have already mentioned, so that was. And those were the, yeah, the things we have already mentioned, so that was, that's what I had.
That'll be a lot.
Yeah.
All right.
Correct.
That'll be a significant amount of time.
Right. So no other agenda items for 28th, everything, those are what we cut.
Okay. Okay. As you can see on our agenda, we were planning to move into executive session, however, it has been deemed to not be necessary for tonight, so we will be crossing that off, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Mrs. Dorn, and then Mrs. Anderson. Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at 7:55. Thank you very much, everybody, for being here, we really appreciate it.